Okay, we are live.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's virtual meeting of the City of Dublin Planning and Zoning Commission. We are living in extraordinary times. Both the state of Ohio and the city of Dublin have declared states of emergency. The Ohio Legislature passed several emergency laws to address the pandemic, including the ability for public entities to have virtual meetings. We appreciate this ability to maintain our continuity of government. For the duration of the stay-at-home order, we will be holding our meetings online and live streaming those meetings on YouTube. You can access the live stream on the city's website. In order to have submitted any questions or comments during the meeting, please use the form under the streaming video on the city's website. These questions and comments will be relayed to the board by the meeting moderator. We want to accommodate public participation and comment to the greatest extent possible. We welcome your comments on cases. Please use a valid name and address when submitting your comments, and please refrain from making any inappropriate comments. This is not a perfect system, but we will do our best in these difficult times, and we certainly appreciate your patience. We will now please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Commission members, please reduce your video so that we can not be distracted when the flag is presented. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, tonight we have an oath of office that will be given by our mayor, Chris Amaro's groom. So, welcome, Mayor Amaro's groom.
Well, hello, Planning and Zoning Commission members. I was here to swear a warrant in last week and told you how much the city council appreciates you and how grateful we are for your service. So, don't want an opportunity to say that to you pass without reinforcing it. So, thank you for what you do. I have the pleasure of wearing Lance in this evening. So Lance, if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me, I, Lance Schneier,
I, Lance Schneer,
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
that I will faithfully execute,
that I will faithfully execute,
the duties as a member,
the duties as a member,
of the Planning and Zoning Commission,
of the Planning and Zoning Commission,
of the city of Dublin,
of the city of Dublin,
and will to the best of my ability,
and will to the best of my ability,
preserve, protect, and defend,
preserve, protect, and defend,
the Constitution of the United States,
the Constitution of the United States,
and the state of Ohio,
and the state of Ohio,
and the ordinances and charter,
and the ordinances and charter,
of the city of Dublin, Ohio,
of the city of Dublin, Ohio,
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations, little virtual handshake there.
There we go.
Thank you, Lance. We're looking forward to great things from all of you and again, appreciate so much what you do. Have a wonderful meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Beal, will you please call, roll? Ms. Beal, you're muted.
Sorry. Okay, Mr. Fishman. Can you hear me?
Here.
Mr. Supalack?
Here.
Ms. Call?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Ms. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Schneer?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. At this time, I will entertain a motion for acceptance of documents and approval of minutes for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and I have a second. Ms. Beal, will you please call roll?
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman? Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you again, Ms. Beal. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board to the city council when rezoning and planning of property is under consideration. In such cases, city council will receive recommendations from the commission. In other cases, the commission has the decision-making responsibility. Anyone who intends to address the commission on any of these administrative cases must be sworn in. The agenda order is typically determined at the beginning of the meeting by the chair. The rules and regulations of the Planning and Zoning Commission state that no new agenda items are to be introduced after 10:30 p.m. Tonight, I will take the cases in order as they appear on the agenda. Anyone intending to address the commission on the case, on any of these cases, please stand, raise your right hand, and answer in the affirmative. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony to this commission?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Tonight, we have three cases. The following three cases on tonight's agenda may be approved by consent if staff, the applicant, and the commission agree on all conditions. Those three cases are case number one, amended final development plan, conditional use, El Pacaro patio. Case number two, conditional use, the law agreement. Case number three, conditional use, calming waters massage. If there is any public comment for any of these cases, the applicable cases will be removed from the consent agenda. Staff, have we received any public comment for the cases on the consent agenda?
We have not.
Thank you, Ms. Huesack. At this point, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would move to approve the cases on the consent agenda as read into the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Grimes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Ms. Beal, please call roll.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Warren? Am I on now?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Tonight, we have Shodding Greer's Funeral Home at 5980 Perimeter Drive, case number 20-013AFDP, amended final development plan. This application is a request for the installation of a private drive, gate, shared parking, and a shared dumpster. The 7.23 acre site is north of Perimeter Drive, about 750 feet west of the intersection with Wall Street and zoned Planned Unit Development District. Ms. Martin?
Yes, good evening. Give me just a moment to pull up my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Good evening. As mentioned, this is a request for review and approval of an amended final development plan for Sheddinger Funeral Home. Amended final development plans are the fourth and optional step in the planned unit development process. Amended final development plans alter a previously approved final development plan. The final development plan for this site was originally approved in 2018. The site is located north of Perimeter Drive, approximately 900 feet west of the intersection with Wall Street. The site is three acres in size and currently under construction. The star indicates the area of the site under consideration this evening. As mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission did review and approve a final development plan for an approximately 11,000 square foot funeral home in November of 2018. As part of that, the site does include 87 parking spaces where 82 are required and includes a pond located along perimeter for both stormwater management as well as an aesthetic feature. The architectural character of the building is modern and accented with traditional materials. Shown in red is the area of the proposed drive aisle. Additionally, a shared dumpster agreement is being requested this evening. These are the existing conditions of the site. Photo one shows the northwest corner of the site and the shared property line between Sheddinger and Rusili. This is the area in which the proposed drive aisle is to be located. Staff does have a condition that the applicant work with us to field locate the drive and preserve the existing deciduous tree. Photos two and three show the rear and front elevation of the funeral home respectively. These are the existing conditions of the Rusili site. You'll notice that this drive aisle intersects Wall Street, and at the terminus of this drive aisle is where the connection is proposed to be made between the Sheddinger site and the Rusili site. As the commission may recall, at the time of the final development plan, there was consideration and request by the commission to have a shared parking agreement with an adjacent neighbor. At the time, the applicant was not able to fulfill that request, but has since partnered with Rusili. As part of that partnership, they are proposing to share a dumpster as the use of the dumpster on the Sheddinger site is proposed to be limited in nature. Should the dumpster agreement ever be terminated, the Sheddinger site is required to build the dumpster per the originally approved final development plan. The northwest corner of the site shows the proposed 24-foot wide drive aisle. This drive aisle will be gated at times that are not in use. The applicant will provide more detail, however. They have indicated to staff that the use of this drive aisle and shared parking agreement will be extremely limited in nature and only for funerals that go well above and beyond the typical capacity. With this improvement, four spaces are required to be removed from the Sheddinger site. With the removal of four spaces, the Sheddinger site without the Rusili shared parking agreement still exceeds the minimum parking requirement. As indicated in the staff report, two trees are proposed to be removed, although staff is intending to work with the applicant to preserve the deciduous tree. The shared dumpster will allow a few additional spaces in the northeast corner of the Sheddinger site to be established. With this request, a minor text modification is required and recommended for approval to permit a zero setback for the shared access drive. This provision would not extend to buildings or parking lots. Finally, staff is recommending approval of the amended final development plan with three conditions. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Arthur, Mr. Supalack?
Effect on parking requirements on the Rusili site?
So, three spaces are proposed to be removed from the Rusili site. However, the Rusili site will also still exceed the parking requirement and will retain a total of 90 spaces on site.
Got it. And then also, I guess I'm asking as much as anything else. Obviously, we are articulating a change to the text that allows what a zero setback. Is there, does that open up a can of worms in the future? I.e., can that then, that setback and that change we made then be used in the future for other modifications we didn't foresee? Is there merit to writing this in a way that is a little more specific?
I think there absolutely is merit to that, Mr. Supalack, and staff is proposing to write it in an extremely narrow manner where it would only be for sub-area C of the perimeter center development, and furthermore, it would only be for these two identified properties, and it would only be for a shared access drive.
Thank you.
Any other? Lance?
Has the applicant provided any projections? How many days there will be services and of those days, any estimate on what percentage would use the overflow parking? Is it, it's used, we expect services be held 200 days a year, but we only expect to use the overflow two days, 10 days, 20 days?
I do believe the applicant is intending to cover that in their portion of this presentation.
Any other questions for staff? Ms. Kennedy?
Just to clarify the traffic flow, Ms. Martin, the intention would be that all traffic would enter the Sheddinger main entrance, correct, and not through the rear through Rusili?
Correct. So, there is only one primary entrance. That entrance is located on Perimeter Drive. And for the majority of funerals, that will be the only entrance, and Sheddinger will only use their parking lot. There will be a gate that closes this drive aisle.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Grimes?
On the amended drawings that I have, they've eliminated the original proposed site of the dumpster. Is that, is that okay? Is it something that should still be referenced in the final plan in the event that this relationship to the adjoining neighbor falls through? How does, how does the plan address that?
Yeah, so we, we as staff are conditioning that as a security measure that this amended final development plan, in the event that that shared dumpster agreement be terminated, refer to the original final development plan. That condition allows staff, the teeth basically, to enforce that the applicant build that facility.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fox?
I just want to clarify with Ms. Martin that at this point, there's no lock on the gate. Is that correct?
The applicant has indicated to staff that there will be a lock on the gate.
Do you know what kind of lock?
No, I think they may be able to speak to that better.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff from the commission? At this point, I'd like to invite the applicant up.
Hello, Aaron Underhill here, representing Sheddinger, and Randy Sheddinger is also participating as well. I'll just say if you
Mr. Underhill, could you please state your address, please?
Oh, yes, I should know that by now, shouldn't I? My address is 8,000 Walton Parkway, Suite 260 in New Albany.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is really a follow-up to conversations that were had when we went through the conditional use and final development plan process when we commissioned a couple of years back. And while we don't believe that the need for excess parking is really going to occur very frequently, I'll have Randy speak to that. Our agreement with the neighboring property owner would say that we can only do it after office hours and on weekends. We can only use their lot during those times. We, so, but we do believe it's a good security blanket on the few times a year where we have a very large visitation. The access component of this is really less important other than for, you know, we're not intending for this to be another way to get onto the public street system. And in fact, visitors will not be encouraged to do that, and I don't think unless they were told in advance that they would even know that they would have that opportunity. As far as a shared dumpster is concerned, Randy and his business has been doing this at other locations about central Ohio, based on the same agreement model. And based on the fact that there is a low generation of refuse from a property like this and misuse, it only makes sense to share in the cost for both parties and to not have to do an improvement that really, you know, it's probably the most unsightly part oftentimes of a development anyway. So, if we can save ourselves some of that, we like to take the opportunity to do so, and then, of course, if the agreement ever went away, we would be required, and we acknowledge we'd be required to do our own dumpster pad and dumpster. So, with that, Randy, I'd like you to maybe talk a little bit about operationally, how often you think that we will even use use this excess parking and then how the gate would operate.
Sure.
Mr. Schneer? Could you please also state your address for the record?
5980 Perimeter Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity, and as Aaron said, this is one of the things that Planning and Zoning really wanted us to do, to explore additional parking. And by good fortune, the company that's building our funeral home happened to move next door to us, so it was good timing. And they were, they were open to the idea and have been great to work with. This overflow is really for those traumatic and tragic situations. It's the, it's the local firefighter in Dublin that has a tragic death, or the young person where really the community comes out with great support. I think one of the council folks asked, you know, how often? My best guess would be 10 times a year that we would need kind of overflow parking, and it's only available in the evening and on weekends from Rusili, from our agreement. And, and I don't think anyone about the access would come in that way. Everyone's going to come into the funeral home, find that there's no parking. We would have signage that says, go here and go through this access to the overflow. The lock on it, to be honest, we haven't put a lot of time into it. We've identified a padlock. It's going to be used so infrequently, it'll be just a combination lock that just our staff would know. It's the idea right now, but certainly we're open to whatever ideas. We're really doing this out of request from the city of Dublin that we explore overflow parking our neighbors to the, to the west. We're not amicable to the idea and said no completely. And so, this one came up, and we're trying to, trying to make it a better solution for everyone in the community.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Ms. Fox?
Yes, I, when I asked about the lock, the only reason I asked that is because I know that, and I think it'll be read, I know that there was a concern about cut-through traffic. And I like the idea that there's a gate. I also thought it was, would be a good idea that there would be a lock so that it isn't just inadvertently left open all the time so that neighbors, neighborhood people know where cut-throughs are. It usually isn't the everyday traffic. It's usually neighborhood traffic. You know where the cut-through is, so you use it all the time. So, if, if you're going to keep it closed, except when you're using it for access, using the dumpster or for overflow, and it's locked, I think that's a good solution. And then, I just had one other question for you, Mr. Schneer. I noticed along the back of the property that there are some trees there that are burr oaks. And they're very, very slow growing, and I'm, I'm just thinking about the comment that we had earlier, which I know we'll hear about. I don't think there's going to be much noise, but that would be an opportunity for some screening with evergreens. Is that something you would give some consideration to instead of those burr oaks?
Are you talking about the burr oaks that we're proposing to put in?
Yeah, and the ones towards the back, which I don't know if you've done that, but I was just in thinking about some of the concerns, which I think will come up from the people that live in the residences on Wall Street to sort of mitigate some of the views going to the south. Is that something you'd consider putting in instead of the burr oak?
I can't really comment on that. I don't have the landscape plan in front of me. I know that it has been a, an expensive proposition to about the $150,000 of landscape we're putting in. I can't comment on the exact number of trees, but I think it's over 100 that we're putting on the site. And so, I'm not, I'm not prepared at this point to say, yes, we'll make that switch without talking to the landscape planner. I do know, if you saw the picture of the view from the residences on Wall Street, you can barely see the dumpster from their house, let alone our site, and it's well screened already. So, at this point, I know our landscape plan has met, met the requirements, and I think over exceeded them, to be honest.
Right, it's a beautiful landscape plan. I'm not denying that, and I, and you do have quite a few trees there. I just wondered if that was a substitute that wouldn't cost anything, if that would be a consideration.
I would be open to it, but I can't agree to it right now without talking to landscape and the construction.
Okay.
Ms. Fox, I can comment on that from a staff perspective. We do have a very senior and skilled landscape inspector that works with our commercial properties one-on-one, and he is able to work with them to shift evergreen trees from one part of the site to another. So, I definitely think it's, it's something we can look into at the staff level and would really have no problem working with Sheddinger to provide.
I think that might help some of the concerns that we're hearing from, from the residents off of Wall Street. Thank you.
Any other commission members have question? Mr. Fishman?
Yes, I just want to thank Mr. Underhill and Mr. Sheddinger for your responsiveness to our previous comments about the overflow parking and, and the landscaping and so on. I think you've done a tremendous job. I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other commission members have comments or questions?
One, one I forgot, Ms. Call. I noticed as I was driving by, and I mentioned this to planning, so it's just a question of curiosity. As you're building, excavating the pond, I noticed the mounding that's occurring there. From the street view, looking north towards the front of the property, will the mounding be leveled out some to be able to get a better view of your pond and your patio area? Is that just a construction mounding at the time?
I'm not sure about the level right now. I know that was actually a concern we had that we didn't want mounting because we wanted to view the beautiful building. Unfortunately, I believe that the city of Dublin required us to have the mounding.
Actually, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we all said that you could go without it. That's why I'm asking it, because I noticed when I drove by, you cannot see the front of your property well. And, and we had said, I believe, and Ms. Martin can correct, that we said it was fine for you not to have it.
Yeah, the commission did definitely move toward not having mounting, and Mr. Henderson did provide some additional information. So, Michael, if you can chime in on that?
Yeah, so, this is Michael Henderson, our engineering division. I did go back and take a look at the grading plan, and they're largely tying into the existing sidewalk grades as you move from west to east along the frontage. They're not proposing any mounding along that area, so I think it's largely tying into the existing grades in that area. So, I wouldn't expect to see obstructive views of mounding the building.
Okay, so that's confusing to me, because as I drove by it today, when you say existing grade to the sidewalk, the grade to the sidewalk was flat originally.
Right, right. So, to clarify, I haven't been out there recently, but what I suspect is there's probably mounding that's happened based on the excavation of the pond. When I say existing, I mean before construction had happened. So, when the construction is finished, I don't expect there to be mounding on the site.
And I would add to that council member Fox and members of the commission that when this came before for a minor text modification on November 1st of 2018, the commission approved Uh the commission approved it with a condition that requirements for landscape mound along perimeter um be eliminated. So that is not a a requirement that they have to meet the mound that is elsewhere on that street, given the nature of the site.
I guess I just wanted to clarify that point because I do think it's going to be a beautiful amenity as you go down the street with the pond and the patio. And I didn't want there to be any confusion that we had allowed that to be leveled out some.
I'll double check with the with Rusili to make sure that the mound, see where the status is now, but I'm glad to hear that.
All right, those are my only questions. Thank you.
Mr. Fishman?
As I didn't notice, it I assume there's an aerator and a fountain in that pond, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, I couldn't see it on the.
It's not it's not there yet.
Okay. Thank you.
And we're we're happy to say the pond is holding water if you've been by there.
Good news.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant? Staff, it's my understanding that we've received two items of public comment. Has there been any additional or could you please read in the public comment received?
We received public comment from uh one resident, two public comments from the same resident. And they're rather lengthy and we have uh shared them with you all. So um.
Thank you, Ms. Husek.
Happy to read them.
Has the has the commission been able to review Svetlana's uh comments?
Yes.
Yes.
Claudia, I think maybe you should read uh read them for the public.
Okay, I'm happy to do so. Um give me one minute here.
As she's bringing those up, these are both received from Svetlana Gorokov at sixty-seven forty-four Winston Way, Dublin, Ohio, four-three-zero-one-seven.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Ms. Husek.
Okay. Um hello, I appreciate the city of Dublin for uh giving me an opportunity to voice my opinion. I am a Dublin city resident of almost sixteen years and I am very proud to live in this community. Because of all the people that live here and the work that is being done by the city. At the end of last year, I entered an empty nester community um at the stage of my life. And I moved to a new community, the village of Coffin Park. To live in what I thought was a quiet community. Recently, I found out that a funeral home is being built so close to me that I can see it from my window. A few days ago, I found out that um they are proposing to remove trees and connect to the Rusili parking lot for overflow parking. Rusili has their entrance exit at Wall Street. The streeted houses um that the houses in my community are built along. Traffic on the street is steady during work hours and into the evenings. Plaster is noise coming from nearby thirty-three and two-seventy. So the somewhat quiet time we have had is in evenings and over the weekends. By connected to parking lots, we are losing this precious common time. I am asking the planning and zoning commission to not allow uh for the funeral home to can to remove the beautiful um. Mature trees and to connect to parking lots. It seems that something um like a parking lot and the capacity should have been thought of when purchasing the land and not the other way around. There is a five sir for parking lot, which is the property to the west. Um that's my edit here. Um. And uh the funeral homes property, the parking lot is empty on weekends and we evenings. And maybe this is something that the funeral homes management can look into. There is also uh they're also proposing to use a dumpster on Rusili's property. Which will make Ronkey or a similar service enter and exit from the Rusili property at a more frequent schedule. Due to the nature of services, the funeral home will provide. Being a valuable service provider, I think that shutting up funeral home should have half their own dumpster. I do not know if any of my neighbors received a public notice as I did. As I mentioned before, our community is very new and is still being built. During this time of the pandemic, it is difficult to gather and meet people. But if to stop the proposed changes, I need to get signatures from other people in my community. And I will do so if needed. Please let me know. I very much appreciate the city office figures and work. To make people want to live in Dublin and work for their understanding that the um residents of the village of Coffin Park. At the end of their careers, want to have some quiet time inside of their homes. And outside on their patios during warmer seasons. Thank you very much for listening. So that was the very first comment we received from uh Mrs. Gorkov and we received the second one. Which I am happy to read as well.
Thank you.
Dear commissioners, please accept this note as my heartfelt request that you decline the construction of an access drive between the shutting of funeral home. And the Rusili constructions parking lot. When I purchased my home, it was part of a quiet and calm community. I built my home right on the other side of Wall Street and I expected the traffic levels on Wall Street. To be those of a standard business parking lot access road. Most traffic during the weekdays with little to none on the weekends or evenings. Now that I see it is that in addition to regular traffic by vehicles that access my community. As well as existing businesses during the day, this road is being used by all kinds of vehicles, vehicles. As a pass through, including big and s- and heavy trucks. Rusili, due to the nature of their business, has vehicles going in and out constantly and shutting our world to. Our houses are built so close to Wall Street that I can hear inside my home every vehicle that goes by. The only consult consulting factor was that shutting of funeral homes entrance and exit was to be solely connected to perimeter drive. Providing no incentive for shutting our guests to use Wall Street now with the new proposal of an access drive. Which will connect to Rusili and therefore to Wall Street, even more traffic will be directed to pass my home. And my community's uh houses build along Wall Street during evening hours and weekend hours. I am uh permanently asking you to please decline the proposal to build the access drive. This is the only viable options or solution remaining to provide my empty nester community with. Some resemblance of peace and tranquility. I am hoping shutting of funeral home will understand that I am talking about living people and their well-being. Who might stay in their homes, not even leave them for days. So that's the end of the that's the end of the comment. One of the things I would like to point out as part of this is that um. Is that Rusili is. I apologize. Uh Rusili is moving into these offices at the moment. So the construction traffic that Mrs. Gorkov is seeing currently. Has a lot to do with Rusili constructing the office space. So I don't believe that Rusili is actually using that office for constructional business. But I've been not the comments or what they are.
Thank you, Ms. Husek.
Thank you.
All right, at this point in time, I'd like to turn it over for commission discussion. Are there any commission members who would like to start us off? Ms. Kennedy?
Ms. Call, um I Claudia, thank you for sharing the resident comments. I know we read those in advance as well. But for me, um it seems as though our applicant has addressed some of the concerns that the resident did bring up. Specifically, the pass through and the increase of traffic, you know, by having a gate there that's lockable, as Ms. Fox pointed out. Um I think addresses that issue specifically. Um she calls out, please don't eliminate trees. But I don't know if the landscape plan, which which seems like they're adding a number of trees in that space. I don't know if residents are aware of that level of detail necessarily, because it seems that the applicant's doing a a good job to kind of build up the green, the greenery in the space. Um I know it was the request of the commission and I was on on this on that side of the request or along with a few other other people here. To consider this overflow parking so that we won't jam up the streets in possibly even surrounding neighborhoods for these, you know, ten times a year that we may see this type of situation. So in my mind, um I think that the applicant has done a good job to address some of these concerns specifically. So so that's those are my takeaways right now.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Fishman? You're muted. You're muted.
Now am I am I on?
Yes, Mr. Fishman, we can hear you.
Thank you. Anyway, I agree uh creasing a hundred percent. I think that once the construction's done and also uh they'll be entering through the uh Schettinger. Property, not Wall Street. Um uh it'll be overflow, so I think that'll solve that problem. I think once the landscaping's in and and I I think the the neighbors will appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Schrein.
Obviously, I wasn't a part of this process before. I think it's an elegant solution. The applicant referenced uh in in the agreement that the overflow would only be available uh after office hours and on weekends. In the documents, and I may have overlooked it, but in the documents that were provided to us, that there's a. An exhibit reference, but I didn't see it. So I would just want to rely on the representations that in fact that is uh what the agreement is with respect to the hours.
Staff, do we receive a a copy of that shared agreement?
I believe uh maybe Randy uh or Mrs. Schettinger can talk a little bit about what his expectation is. I mean, it's it's tough to tell in terms of when those conditions would actually occur. They are already exceeding their parking as of it.
Yes, Ms. Husek, I believe I believe there's um that Mr. Sch- Schneider was specifically referencing the weekends. And evening use of the adjacent property through their agreement. And I believe the applicant said that according to their agreement, it was only going to be used. It was only going to be available to be used on the weekends or outside of office hours.
Most likely, yes.
Right, so in there, and I see Aaron's hand going up, so.
Yep.
All I've done is read the easement, um but I'll let Aaron weigh in on it and I'm happy to supplement if necessary.
Yes, Mr. Underhill.
Um I I believe and I I think I found uh the uh draft agreements even on the planning commission's webpage. And uh I I'm certain I don't have the documents in front of me, but they do in fact mention these restrictions. And those restrictions are important to Rusili and the operation of their space, just as they are important to uh everyone else, making sure that we're holding up our end of the bargain. So one of the uh stipulations, I think, of uh of doing all of this was that we share uh that document with your staff and your legal counsel, and we've done so.
Thank you, Mr. Underhill. Answer your question.
Well, the 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 agreement is there and I'll defer to other attorneys uh present as well. The agreement is there, but it references an exhibit and I didn't see the exhibit. And the exhibit is where the terms and conditions are set set out. And it may be in the file and I overlooked it, but there is a draft agreement, but that those conditions aren't included.
Ms. Martin?
I may have overlooked it.
Mr. Schire, you did not overlook it. So the agreement does reference, I believe, in exhibit C. The applicant is going to be required to provide that to us prior to building permitting. The applicant, I think, had originally, and Mr. Underhill, you can correct me if I'm wrong, uh said that the final parts of these exhibits. Were dependent upon the commission's approval and any conditions the commission may place on them. So they wanted to delay providing those exhibits, um which both planning, engineering and legal staff were agreeable to.
Yes, thank you, Nikki. That's a good point. I I wanted to make sure it's a little bit of a chicken or the egg because we want to attach the plan that is actually approved by the city. And in fact, the agreement, I believe, references has a blank for uh whatever this case number is and the approval. So um certainly we'll be running that by staff and um certainly don't mind going on the record that we're making a commitment to those hours if it's not clear now.
Right, and just to note on the exhibit C, um that is referenced in that shared access easement draft that was provided. That references, as as Ms. Martin mentioned, the depiction of the easement area. But it does go on to limit the availability of that cross-access to the time when the reciprocal parking is in effect. Uh down on page three of the draft easement. And that in turn is um outside the normal operating hours of the business conducted on Rusili parcel. And um evenings and weekends. So that is stated there in the in the easement document as well.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Any other questions or comments, Ms. Fox?
Yes, I was just wondering whether it would be um uh advisable to add in the development text, even though it might be already as um. Was mentioned in exhibit C that uh the gate would be locked. And only opened during the times that access is required. I know that the concern for additional noise, I I think that's not a not really going to be a problem. Cut through concerns by having it in the development text that the gate would be only opened and locked otherwise. Except for the access time would alleviate concerns of cut through. Tree removal, I think we've already done that. And I also would um reinforce the fact that the site has, as Mr. Schettinger said, over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of new landscape. Being placed on it. So um I think that amenity is going to be quite advantageous to the neighborhood. And I think uh having planning discuss the possibility of maybe moving some evergreen screening from once one part of the landscape, if possible. Towards the backside of the property if uh if there's a concern that um. The view would be something that the neighbors would prefer that way, although I don't think with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of landscaping, that's going to be. It's going to be really necessary, but it is certainly something planning could look at. So I think adding the fact that the gate should be locked in case for some reason. You know, things change, that at least the cut through by people who are on the properties, such as Rusili's can uh trucks and that sort of thing. Don't use it as a as an access way, as a cut through, and I think that will alleviate it.
That that is certainly intent here for sure in terms of having uh high-profile services. That might need overflow parking. So that's how we understand this would work. And then we can certainly work with our landscape staff to um to um deal with the tree selection.
Thank you, Ms. Fox and Ms. Husek. Are there any other? Mr. Fishman? You're muted.
Automatically to mute. Am I on now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um uh I sympathize with the resident. I sympathize with the residents, but I I think if maybe we can send them a letter since this unusual way we're doing this, that that the alternative is to the overflow would park in their neighborhoods. At my age, I go to a lot of funerals. I used to go to weddings. Now I go to funerals. And and oftentimes at funeral homes, there there is no overflow parking, and you find yourself parking a block away in in the neighborhood and walking to the funeral home. So I think this is a much better alternative than than having cars parked in front of your house. And then the cars on the street, I think they've done, they've been really responsive, and I'm really happy with that. So but I think we might want to answer their response, you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Any other questions, comments? Commission deliberation? Now, Mr. Box, I have a question for you. According to my notes here, it looks like we have four takeaway items. One of them is that the gate remain locked, except where utilized. One of them is the applicant work with the landscape planner for tree replacement, just moving around the the site of the required items. Number three is narrowing the language, making it pertinent to perimeter section C only. And then the fourth is that Exhibit C reference that has the depiction of the easement and limiting the hours to the hours not utilized by the adjacent business. So, Mr. Box, do we need to call these out? Can we specify that the applicant work with staff or staff, direct staff to mitigate these items when this goes through?
Oh, I believe that the, and at least with respect to the landscape, that that is a built-in feature of our development code. So unless unless Claudia or or somebody informs me that I'm wrong about that, I see no need to include that as a condition. I saw when Nikki was sharing her screen that we had the condition for it to be locked. I think that the other three aside from the landscape, we make, we should go ahead and call out as conditions, just so that all of those factors that were noted in your discussion this evening are duly vetted.
So, Ms. Martin, it looks like we are looking to add two additional conditions, the narrowing the language pertinent to perimeter section C only, and then ensuring that Exhibit C is included with the depiction of the easement and the hours limited to non-business operation hours.
Certainly. With regard to the development text, I don't know if I I was as clear as maybe I could have been in response to Mr. Suplack's question. It is already absolutely narrowed to exactly these two properties and this drive aisle. So I think we could potentially eliminate that from the list. I I did add Mrs. Fox's request for the gate. And then if you'll remind me one more time.
Exhibit C inclusion.
Exhibit C, perfect.
We make that look so easy on at the DIA's. It's not that easy on on Zoom.
I agree that I don't think that we have to make any kind of condition about the landscaping. It was just a comment that if if an evergreen would have been preferable to screen would be, but I I would not think it's important to do it as a as a condition since the since staff is already working with the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. On the screen, we have presented the five conditions as discussed in our commission discussion here. Do I have a motion for approval of the amended final development plan?
I like, oh, I'll second then.
I didn't see pictures on the first, so I heard two male voices, Mr. Grimes. It looks like it's for you.
First.
Second.
And Ms. Kennedy, second. Ms. Fox, did you have another comment?
I saw that the condition said that it should be locked only for overflow parking, but they need to have it unlocked for refuge to be able to get in and out for their dumpster. So I I don't want to put it in such a way that we don't let them get to the dumpster, and it and it is written that way. So I don't know how important that is, Mr. Box, but I I do know that we are, they are going to have it unlocked at other times, and I don't want.
Now, Mr. Box, I do have a motion and a second. Do I need to continue forward, or can we recommence discussion?
Well, you have a you have a motion and a second to approve. So you can move forward with discussion if you want to amend the condition as as it is stated in what Ms. Martin has typed up. We can do that by motion or so technically, motion belongs to the body now. So you can amend it to include that it may be unlocked during such times as necessary to access the dumpster. And that's adopted off the overall. Aaron may have a suggestion.
If we have opportunity for conversation, Mr. Underhill, is the gate opening required for access to the dumpster? Or is there going to be, I imagine you're not going to be taking a garbage truck to the dumpster and back to the building, but rather individuals? So is it a requirement that the gate be unlocked to use the dumpster?
I don't believe so. Randy, I would believe that the access would be from Rusili's site for vehicles, correct?
Yeah, there'll be no trash vehicles on our lot. It'll just be the normal Rusili waste taller. I don't believe the gate has to be unlocked to to get our trash bag out there. And whoever said it was correct, we won't be taking a truck over there. It would just be a trash bag here and there, or a wheeled trash container. And if it is so, it's no big deal, because we could just unlock the padlock if we walk through. So it's not a big issue for me.
All right, Ms. Fox, does that mitigate your concern?
It's fine. I just wanted to be sure that it wasn't too narrow for the applicant. Thanks.
I have one other quick clarification item on the last condition relating to Exhibit C before the issuance of building permits. Those permits have already been issued.
Thank you for keeping us honest.
Maybe it's occupancy, or I don't know, but something else, because we'll immediately be in violation.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Underhill. Ms. Martin, could you amend that to something that staff is amenable to building, excuse me, occupancy or something?
Yes, I will change it to occupancy.
All right. Do I need an amended first and second, or can we proceed with changes, Mr. Box?
So since there was already a motion on the floor, I would move to amend it to reflect the occupancy permit instead of the building permit in the final condition. And if that is adopted, then you would move on to the main motion.
All right. Do I have a motion to amend?
Motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. Ms. Beal.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Suplack.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Warren, you're muted.
Yeah, yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer? And Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. We're looking forward to having this nice amenity in our city. So thank you, gentlemen, for joining us this evening, and we look forward to seeing the landscaping and hopefully not patronizing the business anytime soon.
Did you just you just voted on the amendment to the condition?
Oh, all right. Then now I will take, now I will take a motion for the approval.
With the agreed-upon conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Fishman? Ms. Beal, please call roll.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Suplack?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal, and thank you, gentlemen, for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is a motion required for the minor text modification?
Yes.
Mr. Box?
We have two applications.
We have an application that requires a text modification vote and a FTP vote, which the commission just did, but the text mod needs to be on as well.
Yes.
Mr. Box, I understand that, yes, we need a motion for the amended text, the minor text modification.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Mr. Grimes, thank you. Ms. Beal?
You're muted.
Ms. Beal, you're muted.
Mr. Suplack?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Mr. Schneer, we did not hear you.
So, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Next up, we have Mango's Place Daycare, case number 19-125 FDP for a final development plan. This application is a request for the construction of an approximately 7,900 square foot daycare facility and associated site improvements. The 2.16 acre site is northeast of the intersection of Emerald Parkway and Rings Road and Zone Land Unit Development District. Mr. Hounshell?
Good evening. Give me just one moment to pull this up for you.
Thank you.
And I believe we have everybody we need here as well. All right. Well, good evening. This is a review for approval of a final development plan for the Mango's Place daycare. Shown on the screen is the proposed site. The site is located within the Thomas Kohler PUD subarea E, which also includes Emerald Town Center to the north. The site is located northeast of the intersection with Emerald Town, Emerald Parkway and Rings Road, and has frontage on three major corridors, including Warner Temple Road to the east. Shown on the screen for your reference is Emerald Town Center located just north of the site. The four pictures shown on the screen are to give architectural examples of of what is is currently located north of the the proposed site. Because the Emerald Town Center and the post site are located within the same subarea, development text does require consistency in common architectural themes across the entirety of the subarea. So materials that are used at Emerald Town Center will need to reflect excuse me, what is being proposed with the existing, the proposed site will need to reflect and compare to what is currently at Emerald Town Center. The materials that are used at Emerald Town Center are stone and red brick as primary materials and stucco as a secondary material. Shown on the screen are some existing conditions. There are natural features that are located on this site, the first being Kramer Ditch, which runs from east to, from west to east and is located along the northern portion of the site. There is also a large tree line that covers a majority of the northern portion of the site. The Kramer Ditch does include a large flood floodplain and, or sorry, a floodway and 100-year floodplain, which can be shown on the screen in red, on red, the red line is the existing 100-year floodplain. This has made it difficult in previous years for any kind of development on the site, as it does limit more than half of the site for development. The applicant has submitted a letter of map revision, which would be also known as a LOMAR, which can be shown on seen on the screen. It would be the green line. This would adjust the floodway and 100-year floodplain to allow for development on the site. This adjustment is crucial for the application at hand today. The applicant will be required to obtain an approved letter of map revision from FEMA to formally revise the effective floodway and 100-year floodplain prior to building occupancy, and this will be reviewed and is being reviewed with our engineering staff. In November of 2019, this case was before the Commission for a Concept Plan. Overall, the Commission was supportive of the proposed use, the proposed building layout and site layout. Two items of comment from the Commission were the architectural details for four-sided architecture and also landscaping for the site and how it would be screened from the, from Emerald Parkway, Warner Temple and Rings Road to the south. The site has had a few minor changes since the concept plan in 2019. The applicant is still proposing a 7,800 square foot building with a 1,200 square foot enclosed playground to the east of the building. The applicant is proposing 45 parking spaces where 43 are required by code. There is sole access to this site, vehicular access to this site from the south to Rings Road, where there is an existing curb cut. And the applicant has improved the connectivity, pedestrian connectivity, as they have connected to the existing sidewalk that is located along Emerald Parkway, which also then leads to the building, and there is access to this building via walkways on the northwest and south sides of this building. The dumpster location has changed very slightly. It has moved slightly to the west from where it was proposed prior with the concept plan, which has caused some parking, the parking layout to change very slightly in it. But it has not, it has not impacted the the number of parking spaces proposed. Shown on the screen are the south and west elevations of the proposed building. The south elevation can be viewed from Rings Road, and the west elevation can be viewed from Emerald Parkway. The applicant is proposing a 30-foot building that does meet the 35-foot maximum requirement for this subarea. This building does take a lot of inspiration in terms of materials and design from the Emerald Town Center. The materials being proposed here would be a Detroit red brick as the main veneer on all four elevations and a Calgary thin stone as the water table and also used as an architectural detail on all four elevations of this building. There is also a thin set stone smooth band, which can be seen above the windows and door, which is a continuous band along all four elevations. And shown on the screen are the north elevation and the east elevation. The north elevation can be viewed from Emerald Town Center and the east elevation from Warner Temple Road. The north elevation is blocked by the tree line to the north, so this has the least amount of visibility compared to the other three elevations. Some additional details for the commission's review tonight. On the left would be the proposed, a sketch of the proposed fence. It would be a four-foot tall black steel fence that would enclose the proposed playground, and on the right would be the proposed dumpster enclosure, which would have the same architectural details and materials used on the building for this enclosure that would be approximately six feet in height. I would also have a cedar wood gate that would enclose the dumpster enclosure on the south portion of the enclosure. One topic of discussion that was seen per the concept plan was the landscaping, and what would be proposed, the commission was curious how the applicant would screen the site, especially the playground and along Emerald Parkway. The applicant has been approved with the city for tree removal in anticipation for this application moving forward. Due to the restrictions of this site, the applicant is unable to replace all trees on the site, as it would cause overcrowding. the applicant is unable to replace all trees on the site as it would cause overcrowding for the site. So planning staff is conditioning that a fee be paid in lieu of the caliper inches not being replaced on the site, and that specific replacement tree details and locations be provided to staff prior to billing permits submitted. There is a continuous landscape treatment that is along Emerald Parkway that is consistent with what is seen as you go north on Emerald Parkway. And the playground is also screened as required by code due to overhead power lines located along the south property line. The applicant is proposing mounting along the parking lot to screen the proposed parking lot here, as well as the required trees that would need to be placed there as well. And just to top this off, is showing a proposed rendering with the improved stone architectural details for this site. Planning staff has reviewed this application to all applicable final development plan criteria and is recommending approval with five conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that presentation. Commission members, does anyone have questions? Yes, Ms. Fox?
I was wondering, early on, the request from staff was for the dumpster to be located on the east end of the property. And it's still remaining here. It's right at a corner. I know it's well-covered. I'm just curious as to why it couldn't have been fit at the end of the east, the far east end of the drive parking lot, closer to Warner Temple. It looks like there's space there that you could have put a dumpster, you could have. I'm just wondering why that wouldn't have worked out.
Absolutely, and that's a great question. Um, this was a conversation that we carried past the concept plan back in November, as that was something, that was one of the talking points planning staff had for this application. After deliberation with the applicant and some understanding with the site constraints, planning staff didn't come okay with the location of this. They did move it slightly to the west. It's, it's challenging to fit it, you know, anywhere reasonably on the site, as it will be in the way wherever you look. But that's, that's kind of where we were at, and I think Claudia has something to add as well.
Ultimately, it, it, it comes down to the trash truck not being able to turn around.
Is that what it is? They can't turn around?
That's what it is, yes.
Because it looks like that corner back there would be a perfect location.
And we, we pushed and tried to get it in that location, but the truck can't turn around and they can't go in forward, dump it, and then take everything back, backwards.
Okay.
You need to turn around. So that's, it's not an ideal location. It's not our preferred location, but ultimately it is.
The only location. Yeah, because like, because you can't even go down to the end of that dead-end street either, because you'd have to build a street just to get to a dumpster, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it is. They have to turn around. They have to be able to turn around. And in this particular tight site, they can't.
Okay. And one other question about the Kramer Ditch. I couldn't tell and, and my, my drawings are small. When I was out there and looked, the Kramer Ditch looks like there's quite a bit of scrub trees and there's, there's growth and that sort of thing. Is, and I noticed that a large tree was already taken down where the building would sit. Is there, and I don't see any new landscaping along the ditch. So is the ditch remaining natural the way it is, or is that, or is it being removed? I'm just kind of curious as to what the naturalization of the, of the creek is.
Yeah, and I may lean on Claudia here as well in terms of landscaping requirements. But my understanding is that because it would, much of that scrub was within the, the floodway, it's very challenging to get down in there and remove a lot of the scrub. A lot of the work needs to be done outside of the floodway, and it's, it becomes very, very challenging in what you can touch and what you can't touch within the floodway, if that makes, makes sense.
Right. I don't really want you to touch it. I just wondered what was going to be left existing because it would seem, you know, because it's a creek and I, I suppose it's a protected stream corridor, isn't it?
So yeah, ultimately, I would say ninety percent of what is there right now is staying.
Okay.
It's that one tree that came out to make room for the, for the building, and then they're replacing that and they're landscaping their site, but for the most part, it, it's going to look natural in that area.
Okay. And then the, I had a question about the style of the, it said Keystone Style on the retaining wall. There's a retaining wall that goes around the back, the whole back part of the building because of the ground, and is that a, and there, there is a retaining wall detail on S2. Yeah, is that a, is that a manufactured stone? What is there a, what is that retaining wall? Is that a natural-looking retaining wall, or is that, I mean, I don't know.
I would, I would refer to the applicant to, to specify what, what it would be.
Okay. And last question would be about tree selection. We have the ability to make some changes at this point about the landscape. Is that correct?
We certainly do, and we, I did have a conversation about your concern with the Kentucky coffee tree that is specified along the playground area. And I talked to the city landscape architect, and he said tulip tree, yellow pop or frontier elm would be a tree that would not drop as much. Yeah, I don't even know what to say. It wouldn't drop so much stuff, I guess. So if we wanted to do a condition that says that we would replace the Kentucky toffee tree, coffee tree with a species selected by the city forester or the city landscape architect based on the commission discussion, we could certainly do that.
And, and for the commissioners, the reason I brought that up is I had never heard of a Kentucky coffee tree before. And in looking that up, I found that it was a very messy tree and it drops pods and seeds, and it's toxic to humans. And if you were to eat these, and it was all around the toddler garden. So I was concerned that that was not an appropriate tree. So that's why she's, she's mentioning this. I think it should.
Yeah, and I, I did, I did talk to Sean Kowetski, and he, he said there's definitely several options that we could pick from that would potentially not do dropping hazardous.
Poisonous pods. Yeah, I think that's.
Thank you, thank you.
Poisonous pods around the toddler's playground. All right, those are my only questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Kennedy?
Good, good catch, Ms. Fox, on the tree and the poisonous pods. Thank you. On behalf of all the parents out there who may be using this facility.
I just have one question in our staff report and in Zach's comments earlier. He talked significantly about FEMA's requirements when the hundred-year floodplain was mitigated. Is the Army Corps of Engineers involved in that, in the planning? I noticed you referenced the city engineer and FEMA, but I didn't see Army Corps anywhere in there.
I'm going to ask Michael Hendershot to step in here. Planning hasn't done much of the review with the LOMAR. It has been all engineering staff, so I'll let him answer this question.
Yeah, the Army Corps is not involved with this review. It's specifically just FEMA. And as part of the FEMA review, there's a community acknowledgement form that the city of Dublin has to sign, so that's really the scope of our review is part of that, but the Army Corps is not involved with the review of this.
Thank you, Mr. Hendershot.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you. This concludes our case presentation. Is the applicant, oh, sorry, Mr. Grimes, I almost missed you.
Yes, question on the engineering. I don't know how much impact there is on this change of floodline, floodplain line on the flow. Has there been some, any traditional history or known history of flooding either upstream or down? There's a lot of roadway in that area where it's changed the flow somewhat. Can't judge really how much change this is or how much impact it might have back and water up or, or speeding it through there. Has the engineering looked at that preliminary information?
Yeah, so the applicant hired an engineer to do the LOMAR, which did a detailed study of the floodplain. And this is largely to update the floodplain limits based on existing box culverts that are out there today. So it's not really revising what you're going to see as far as flooding limits. It's really just updating the maps to what it really should be, incorporating two-box culverts that's been installed as part of the Emerald Parkway and Warner Temple roadway construction projects.
Thank you, Mr. Hendershot.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Is the applicant present?
Yes, we are present.
Could I ask you to please turn your video on?
Yes.
Hello. Nice to see you. All right. Do you have a presentation for us this evening?
We just know we can answer the questions that have been asked, and we are just really excited and ready to build our own facility. We've been part of the pandemic license. Our Dublin location has been, so we've been open during this time for the essential workers. A lot of our parents have been using us, and it's been great to, you know, be a part of that service. And we're just waiting for the governor to open us to full capacity, but we have been open and looking forward to be in our own space and our own building and more room for parents, so.
Thank you. And to dot our i's and cross our t's, could I have you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Mary Frances Curtis, three-nine-zero-one Bickley Place, Upper Arlington, Ohio.
Thank you.
And Scott Curtis, three-nine-zero-one Bickley Place, Upper Arlington.
Thank you, Bo.
And we can answer a few of your questions.
We also have our engineer and architect on here. The question about the dumpster, we did have discussions about extending the old Rings Road, as we talked about, the city didn't want to go in that direction, which we're fine with. So that's how we ended up on the west side. The, you're asked about the remaining trees. Every tree that is going to be taken down has been taken down in accordance with the Indian BAT law. Those were moved the last week of March, and they were fell the last week of March and they'll be removed shortly. But every other tree on the site is remaining, plus the trees that we had at the landscaper. And as far as the tree selection, yeah, we, I know that our architect, Jim Clark, worked with the landscape architect for the city to replacement and selection of those trees. We're fine with any recommendations. And Jim Clark can speak to the Keystone retaining wall and what the style of that would be.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Could I have you state your name and address for the record?
Jim Clark, seven-eight-four-four Flint Road, Columbus.
Thank you.
The, the stone is a stacked stone. It's man-made product. It looks rough, kind of like the stone of our building. We can get it any color. Thought we'd probably get it brown or tan to match our building. But you're not going to see, it's only about two to three feet high. We have an option from the contractor to do concrete, but then if we do that, then we'll do the thin-set stone on it to match the building. So that's what we're looking at for the wall.
Ms. Fox, did that answer your question?
It did. I kind of tried to look up what Keystone was, and, and so that really is helpful to know that you have that option of concrete and thin-set, so thank you for that.
All right, looking to the Commission, are there any questions or comments that you'd like to make to the applicant at this time? Seeing none?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, Ms. Kennedy?
Yes, thank you. I, I was late to the drop there, Commission Chair call. I just want to thank the applicant for taking into consideration our previous feedback regarding the architecture and some of the changes that you've made. I think those have been nice upgrade to the building itself, so thank you for taking that feedback and being open to it.
Welcome, absolutely. Thank you. And then I just have one comment on the landscaping around the playground enclosure. I know that you know your business far better than I know your business. However, sometimes things are overlooked, so I wanted to mention it. Barberry bushes are thorny bushes, and so if they're immediately adjacent to a semi-private fence, little fingers can reach over and grab thorny bushes and not have a very enjoyable day.
That sounds like a, a feature for their.
Yeah.
No, I agree. I think that what Claudia had said, working more closely with the landscaper to know exactly, you know, some of the items around where the kids can be touching or things that are falling will change a few of those things. I'm in agreement with all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff, have we received any public comment on this item?
We have not.
All right, at this time, I'd like to invite the Commission to deliberate any questions, comments, callouts that you would like to voice before we head into the next section.
Will we, will we need a, a condition for the modifications to the landscaping specs?
Mr. Box?
I have added a condition. I'll share it on the screen.
Perfect.
Thank you. I, I wonder if we could be a little bit more generic and in number six, just direct the applicant to work with the city landscape architect for suitable material?
That's fine. Absolutely.
Any other comments by the Commission?
I have a question for staff. I thought I, I read, I'm trying to find it in the planning report, that there was some concern about some sidewalk access. That, that staff wanted to finish working out. Is, am I correct on that, or has that been taken care of?
So what you may be referencing is from the concept plan in November. There was a discrepancy in the plans that did not show, they showed egress doors out the rear of the building, so the north side, but there were no walkways behind that. They have since added that to their plans, so this is no longer an issue.
Mr. Hounshell, so specifically calling out the staff has concerns with the lack of sidewalk access to the west parking lot and around the entire building, including the playground. That's the comment from the staff report. Has all of that been mitigated?
Yes, it has.
Thank you.
That's what I was speaking to. And then I have another, I have a question. It's not, it's not a concern, but it's, I've been noticing this around the city, and I looked at it, I saw it on the detail of the light poles. And maybe this is a question for engineering or someone, but the light pole bases that we're showing now are showing about a three-and-a-half-foot concrete base, and then the light pole is on top of that. And I saw one of these in the historic district, and they're, they're not attractive at all. And I'm wondering, are those our only options on light poles instead of a pole going straight down to the ground? What is the reason that we have these three-and-a-half-foot concrete round bases with a light pole on top of them? They're just not, they're just ugly. This, this really, it's a general question for all over town, I guess.
If the light poles aren't close to traffic, we could go down to the ground. But if they're close to where the cars are, we'd rather keep it up, because if not, the cars will be hitting the poles and knocking lights over. But we can lower them closer to the building and away from traffic.
Okay, that.
It's more of a, it's more of a safety issue for the pole and for not knocking it down every time somebody pulls up to it.
Right. I get that. They, they remind me of, and I, and I get why, I guess. It's just that they remind me of, of the grocery store shopping center light poles, and they're just, it seems as if there must be a better aesthetic for the base of a light pole than that. Not that I want to change this necessarily, because we're here and that's what it is, but I think that's worth a conversation.
It's worth a conversation for sure. We used to. maybe ten years ago or so require them to be clad in stone. So if that's one to go forward with, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I wouldn't ask that of this applicant now since that wasn't an expectation, but I, I do think there's got to be something else. They, they really look bad.
Yeah, we can certainly keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
That's all.
Any other discussion from the commission? At this point, I'll entertain two motions. Motion number one, to approve and amend the final development plan with a single condition. Has that been modified? Zach, looking to you, is that the one where we made the modification or is that motion number two, the conditional use? If you could present.
It should just be one motion for a final development plan. So on the screen should be the updated sixth condition.
Six conditions. Alright, I'll entertain a motion.
A question to the chair, should we ask the applicant if they're in agreement with the conditions?
We certainly can. Can the applicant speak to that?
Yes, we were aware of these conditions and are finally going forward with it.
Thank you for that confirmation.
Move to approve final development plan with the six conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. I have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Kennedy, second. Thank you very much. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Schneer? Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Suplack?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Alright, with that, it looks like we are concluding Mango's Place. Thank you very much for attending this evening in our very unprecedented circumstances. We appreciate your time and your patience with us as we're navigating these new waters.
Right, we thank you very much.
And we look forward to having you in the city.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to enter into communications, staff.
Yes, the only thing I wanted to bring up is, first of all, thank you, Mark, for also having a crazy dog in your life. Or cat, was it a cat?
That one was a cat, yes.
Okay.
There was also a crazy dog.
Because that's usually, I'm the only one. But we are contemplating having a special meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Architectural Review Board the first week of June to discuss a couple of topics. One is the property maintenance code that is pending before council, but council asked, asked to go back and take a lot, couple of steps back and take another look at that. And also there is a temporary sign code that we need to take a look at in terms of what the Supreme Court did a couple of years ago and we really need to be in line with that. So what I will do is I will send out an email tomorrow to all of you to see what's the best night or time the first week in June to do this meeting, so we're hoping to get you and ARB on the same meeting. So I just wanted to make sure that you will check your emails and make sure that you you chime in.
Thank you, Ms. Husek. Out of curiosity, is this the content law that came out of, what was it, Arizona, New Mexico, something like that?
Yes, that is what it is.
Gilbert, Arizona.
Was it Gilbert? Yeah, I couldn't remember which city, but yes.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you. Yeah, so it is that. So we're trying to address that. And we have a consultant work on that for us and it's, it's very important for us to do it. And also though, to have input and get it done.
Claudia, is that, we talked about the lease billboards. Is that, that discussion needs to happen as well. You know, the, the big billboards that stay up on the four by four post all year long, commercial lease billboards, can we?
Yes, I know what you're, I, I do know what you're talking about. Thad, do you, do you know if that's?
Is that, sorry, Claudia, I didn't mean to speak over you. My recollection is that those will be addressed in this code because they will be treated as temporary signs.
Okay, that's good, because I, it didn't get, it wasn't discussed full, it wasn't discussed at all in the in the committee meeting when we talked about property maintenance, but it was something that was meant to be brought back and discussed. I mean, we, we touched on it, but we didn't make any recommendations or get very far into it.
Right, just to be sure, I'm thinking of the same thing that you are. You're talking about the sort of six by four office space for lease signs that are up twelve months a year.
Right.
Those, those will be addressed in the temporary sign draft that will be presented.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's a thought. So look for an email from me tomorrow and just give me some dates and times that work best for you all.
Claudia, is the building, is the, the building maintenance guidelines or proposals, is that in one of the shared folders or if not, can you circulate that or a link?
Not yet. So once we have a meeting date, we will populate that folder.
Any other items of communication?
I do not have anything right now.
Commission members? Yes, Ms. Kennedy?
I just want to welcome Lance to our PZC commission, so congrats on your appointment and welcome to the team.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. That goes from all of us. Thank you very much.
You know, Lance has the best background from all of us.
Did, did you see my, my light moving over the course of the meeting? I had to scoop my chair back and then back up because I have a window that was putting me in a spotlight. Alright, well, everyone, we're, we're learning as we go. This is new to all of us, so thank you very much for your patience and at this point in time, I call the meeting adjourned.
Thank you so very much.